Let me think about it. And then I'll let you know what.
Escamie County Redevelopment, September 3rd, 2020, 9:20 a.m. Please turn your cell phone to vibrate silence at all setting. Is there proof of publication?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. It was advertised in the PNJ Saturday, August 29th, 2020.
Do we have any speakers for public forum?
No, sir.
Check on public service.
Our first recommendation is concerning the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting minutes for August 6th, 2020, for your review and approval.
Chair, entertain the motion. Motion.
Second.
Please vote. I pass as five in favor. Thank you.
Okay, under budget and finance, the first recommendation is concerning the residential roof program funding and lead agreements, and there are A and B for your review and approval.
Move the item, Amy.
Please vote. Five in favor, thank you. Discussion and information items.
Okay, and on the discussion, there's one recommendation concerning the acquisition of real property located at 4313 Eris Boulevard, for the Eris Boulevard and Diego Circle blight reduction project, for your review, A and B and C.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Move the item, maybe you see the purpose.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Claire, as we do these acquisitions, I would like for you to get with the administrator and identify the funding for the rebuild or reconstruction, and just not the demo, and to remove a blight.
Absolutely.
I think if we continue to leave vacant land, that's continued blight, so I'd like to see the funding and the rebuild program for this as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner May?
Yes, sir.
I did notice that in some cases, like the slabs were still in place and things like that. Is there, is there any, I don't, I don't know if there's any reason why we're doing that, and I think it, if there, if there is no reason why we're doing that, other than just the cost of removal, then we're actually sort of adding to the blight, or we're not doing all that we can. So if there is an interest in, in removing those things, I would certainly want to hear that and, you know, get those, the slabs just look horrible.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to removing them, and I think what staff replied back to me, and whether it's true or false, is that the slab was better than overgrowth. What was the reason for leaving the slab there?
There are slabs, but it's not from our demolitions, it's from just property owners that has not removed those. The ones that we've done, we've removed everything.
So could code enforcement make them remove those slabs? Because I don't think, structurally, you can't rebuild on a slab without it being engineered.
I can reach out to them.
Commissioner May, I know out on Pretty Dope Key, a lot of people left their slabs in place to maintain their rights.
Impervious surface.
Yeah, and I, I recognize that, I mean, that's an unfortunate part about the way our rules work, but you're right, there is no, you can't repurpose a slab for modern construction. So, you know, quite frankly, if there's anything, and that's actually a somewhat larger discussion, that if we can somehow change our rules that would motivate people to remove the slabs and protect their rights for impervious surface, because, you know, basically just say yes, at this time, you know, this amount of impervious surface existed and that right continues, even though the slab is not there.
Right.
If we could do something like that, I think it would go a long way toward, you know, toward people being able to clean them up. And then with regard to, if the, if the answer is that the slab is easier to maintain than, than, than mowing the grass, I don't actually think that's true. I mean, a lot that doesn't need to be weeded around, you know, once you, once you have to put your mower on that lot, just going back and forth and mowing it is fairly easy. So, you know, that may be a bigger question about how can we amend our rules to, to, to protect that impervious surface right that the citizen has, that would motivate them to maybe clean up the lots a little bit better.
I concur, and thank you for making that point, Commissioner Underhill. Claire, I'd like to see, I don't know if Tim Tolbert's here or not, or Haris, I don't see either one of them, but how do they get their stormwater credits in terms of impervious surface if they remove those slabs?
Okay.
But I certainly would be in support of making them remove those slabs.
Okay, I will be. I'll be there.
That would have a huge impact. Funny, that's one of those things that we could possibly do that would have a huge impact on the pockets of poverty and on our, on places like Pretty Dope Key simultaneously.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I didn't know you were having that problem, but, you know, I could be supportive.
It's a strange business practice that we have, and, and, I mean, you can't, you can't blame the property owner, because if he pulls it out and does the right thing, then he loses rights. Well, if we can change that, where we preserve his rights, then we're motivating him to do the right thing.
Well, you know, being a former demolition contractor with my dad, and, I mean, we sometimes leave slabs just because if someone wanted to come build with the same square footage, they wouldn't have to put in a holding pond, they wouldn't have to put in any more stormwater. So I know that is a common practice.
Yeah.
I mean, we practice it ourselves, so I do get it.
Yeah, so if there is any way that we can change that, that'd be an epic solution, I think.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, we stand adjourned. Commissioner Berry?
Thank you, Commissioner May. We'll go ahead and get into, get into a general view. Folks in the audience, we apologize, we had a shade meeting that ran over, that ran over this morning, so we apologize getting a late start, but we'll go ahead straight into general view. Do we have items that are going to be added, added to the agenda tonight, Commissioner Underhill?
I have none.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bagaish.
None for me.
Robert.
No.
All right, I do, Don, has my add-on been distributed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, all right. I do, I do have one add-on for discretionary spending that's been distributed. Madam Attorney.
Which one is that? Is that for the kids up in Canton?
Yeah, for Cantonite Youth Sports Association.
All right, just when you come, will you just also add $1,000 out of my discretionary assistance?
Absolutely. Anybody else?
And Commissioner Berry, yes, I'd like to add a thousand as well.
Fantastic.
Please, serious.
I appreciate that, Commissioner May, Commissioner Bagaish, it's very kind of you. And I know there's young people at Cantonite Will as well. Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir.
All right, Janice?
Yes, sir. We have one addendum to the regular agenda to add a presentation, certificates of appreciation from the Gulf Coast Veterans Advocacy Council, and then there's also one addendum to the county administrators' report. It is the recommendation concerning the CARES Act funding agreement with Ascension Sacred Heart Health System.
Okay, super. Commissioner Underhill, any comments before we get started?
None, thank you.
Commissioner May? I already stepped down, I saw his light on. Commissioner Bagaish?
We just doing a mini forum?
If you have any comments, yeah.
I just want to, I want to congratulate the school board of Escamie County for selecting the first appointed superintendent of schools. I just think it was time for Escamie County to do it. I took a position in 2018 that really was a tough position to take, because exactly half the county didn't want to change. They enjoyed electing their superintendent of schools, which is a very backward throwback position. Ninety-nine point five percent of the other 14,000 public school districts in the country had figured it out. You elect good board members, and then you let them put, cast a wide net and hire the very best, most qualified superintendent around the school. So, so, Mr. Chairman, after spending 10 years on the school board and just dealing with, with that, I'm just so proud of this county for moving forward, and more importantly, for selecting someone who's very, very well qualified. I was concerned that there was going to be a different outcome, and that maybe perhaps the most qualified person would have been slotted. I'm very, very happy that that didn't happen. I'm a huge proponent of public schools, teachers, and public education. It's one of the most important bedrocks of our country. I, you know, I remain worried about it going forward, but at least locally in Escamie County, I feel like we made the right decision. We've now hired a guy with a doctorate degree, tremendous track record, and Dr. Tim Smith is going to enjoy my full support and whatever I can do from this office to support what he's going to be doing, moving our schools forward. I'm a product of the schools here, all three of my kids went to public schools here, and it's just vitally important and critically important to the work we do here at the county in terms of economic development and everything else that we do. So just wanted to make sure that I made that point, and I'm going to do it again tonight at the regular meeting. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Excuse me, Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to quick thank you to our staff who attended the District Four Town Hall in Pensacola Beach last week, Laura Cole, David Herro, Joey Jones, Christine Fanchi, Ron McLeanclin, Jim Hagan, Wes Moreno, Debbie Bowers, Jason Rogers, and of course, Station 13 Pensacola Beach Fire Department for allowing me to host it in the, in the bays of the fire department. I thought that was a great location, allowed us to, to spread out, and, and then Battalion Chief Rask was there as well. I also had the opportunity to do a turtle patrol on, on what was, was going to be one of the last days of, of the turtle season, but we still have a few nests out there that were waiting in a hatch. We actually had 90-plus hatchlings on, on Monday night, but I want to thank Turtle Patrol or Christine Brewster for inviting me to join her on Monday morning. Also, we have our first Ferry Pass Never Heard cleanup on Wednesday, September 16th. Postcards have gone out to those residents who includes, and just reminded that items need to be on the street by 7:00 a.m. And then also, of course, I'm wearing yellow for September's Child Cancer Awareness Month, and, and think about all those, any way you can help support childhood cancer. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Commissioner Bender, I don't necessarily have any comments, let's, so, Madam Administrator, do you have a presentation related to DPC? Do you want to go ahead and do that? So, Board, I thought that it would be a good idea to go ahead and, rather than try to have a presentation tonight about the master planning, go ahead and have it this morning.
Okay.
No opposition? Janice, you want to go ahead and get that set up?
Laura? The questions that they have, the, they are on Teams, the DPC is on Teams, and they've just asked that anyone that's on Teams to please turn down their own volume when presenting, so that we do not hear the echo.
While we're waiting for them.
I did want to mention also that Marie Mott, if she's here, Marie is here, if you had any questions related to COVID, or if you had anything you'd like her to present to you this morning, before we handle the DPC.
Board?
Any questions?
Related to COVID, in terms of what?
If there were any questions that you had related to, you know, any action that the state has taken, whether it be with Quest Diagnostics, or whether it be with rates and things like that that are going on. Increase in rates or decrease in rates, expectations.
Well, I mean, I, I guess we could ask, it just appears that based on the hospitalizations that are way, way down from where they were just, you know, three and a half weeks ago, and the positivity rate getting low, I mean, I guess the question I would ask for her is, are we, have we, it appears as though we've turned a corner, and that we're doing very, very well, and some of the actions this board has taken in terms of our public awareness campaign are paying dividends, and I'd like to maybe, you know, without objection, I'd maybe I'd ask that question, because it appears from the numbers that we're moving this thing in the right direction.
We are seeing decreased positivity trends, so that's, that's really good news. You know, our cumulative overall positivity trend from, trend from March 16th to date is still above that 10% threshold, but for the past about two weeks or so, we've seen consistently below that 10% mark. We did see that big data dump from, initially from Century Prison Testing, which was three or four weeks ago, I think. And then Quest, on the 31st of August, statewide issued thousands and thousands of test results. We were impacted a little bit by that, but we were still below that 10% threshold on that day.
In the news today, it talks about a new vaccine, one of the vaccines that has now come out of trials and is deemed safe, and then, of course, the president has put out by early November, they want, they want communities and states to be ready to deploy the vaccine. Will your office be prepared in Escamie County to deploy the vaccine if it comes, and how will you do it?
Right, we are already planning on vaccine pods, on vaccine distribution. Again, you know, our supply chain is going to come from the state, so once we get that word on what we're getting and how we need to manage it and store it and disperse it, we will start putting more detailed plans into place. We're looking at staffing right now, and, and pulling out our old plans from H1N1 and some of our other vaccine distribution efforts that we've done in the past to kind of cross compare and be prepared for that.
Thank you, Board. Any other questions from, Commissioner May?
Yeah, as we get prepared for the flu season, well, as, as you have the COVID-19 testing sites, and will there be, as we roll out this vaccine, will there be opportunity for kind of mass distribution of the flu shot? Do y'all have any plans for that at all?
We've had some discussions about flu vaccines as well, and I really do want to encourage people to get flu vaccines. We encourage it every year, this year's going to be just as important, if not more. We are talking with the school district about possibly doing some in-school vaccine programs for some of our schools. We did get some of our child vaccines in yesterday, so we're getting ready to gear up to getting that distribution as well, and, and also looking at any other types of opportunities we might have for community-based distribution.
Well, thank you. And finally, I, I don't know if you're on the phone, call, I know Administrator Gilli and I were with the community health and the other three providers. Do we anticipate any spikes in hospitalizations or positive after the holiday, or?
That's, that's always a concern. Anytime we see more congregation, that is a possibility for more transmission. We definitely want to encourage people to avoid those close contacts and crowded settings. Surgeon General's still recommending social gatherings of not more than 10, so avoiding coming into contact with people any more than we have to, wearing masks, washing your hands, and that kind of prevention as well.
Right, well, thank you. My office is close to your Gregory Street office, so I see the people getting tested, so thank you so much.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you for continuing to provide information daily via the emails. I, you know, there's a lot of them, but I try and read them. The final thing I would ask, because it's in the media, and so people on both sides, you know, a lot of this stuff has become politicized, unfortunately, but when the, when the CDC came out and talked about the percentage of people who had no underlying conditions who had actually caught the virus and perished from the virus, it's like 6%. From the Health Department's perspective, is there any cold, hard facts that you could throw out there? Because on one side, people are saying, see, it was, it was mythology. It, it's only killing people that have comorbidities. On the other side, you've got people that say, no, 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 it's very dangerous. So, what's the Escamby County Health Department's official position on that, given that new information and the percentages of the fatalities associated with this virus?
I mean, to me, you know, every loss is a tragedy.
Of course.
So, you know, anytime we can prevent something that's going to improve the health of our community in general, I just would just continue to encourage people to continue those prevention methods. Those are going to be key and we are seeing, you know, people are being touched by it now. You hear somebody that's family or neighbor or friend that's had either a severe illness or has lost someone to COVID. We've had some close losses. You know, Pastor Johnson was a key example of that in the community. So, I just would just continue to encourage that, you know, keep those prevention efforts up.
Thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, before we bring them-
Yes, sir.
Before we bring them up, can I just make a couple of comments before? Are they, are they about to come up on the, I would like to just throw something out?
Related to COVID or DPC?
No, 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 related to DPC and-
Can I, can I ask a question for COVID then, before you do that?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And I think Ms. Gilli and I talked about it. Mr. Chairman, I just want any, PIO or Claire or Meredith, I want to clear up for the record on telling exactly the eligibility for the first rounds of the CARES Act as it relates to the Florida Housing money that we started distributing on the portal that went live on, on Monday and setting up in community centers. So, just for the record, Meredith, Ms. Gilli, or would you clarify? I, you know, I take responsibility and authority for things in which I probably put out misinformation and it was my understanding, I was just not clear of the eligibility. And I don't know what you guys thought the eligibility was, but I was not aware during the presentation that people who were on disability, retired, who got AFDIC or did not have a sixty percent production were not eligible. So, it kind of caused many people to show, to apply that were not able to get it. And so, I would just want to, one, you know, publicly apologize if that information was not communicated through the media outlets that I use within my radio and to just make sure, and I think Ms. Gilli and I had a great conversation Tuesday, to make sure that that information is out and to get a firm clarification from Meredith and Claire or Chip, exactly of the eligibility of this first round that was released on Monday. And so, it could have just been me, I don't know what your interpretation was, Jeff, I don't know what yours were or Robert's. But I know that I left out of here thinking one thing and, and quite frankly, our media release also was not as defined or clear as I thought it should have been in making sure we got that information out.
If those are the eligibility guidelines, it certainly is not, or it certainly was not, because I'm not sure even what you're talking about. So, I don't know, Meredith, Claire, whoever.
Well, I'm sorry.
Whoever wants to talk about it.
I don't have the application in front of me, but mainly if, if you didn't have any income loss or revenue or reduction of pay, that was one of the main criteria.
So, if you're not employed, as in if you're retired, you're not eligible?
That's correct.
You have to be employed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would have been a pertinent part of the presentation, I think.
Absolutely.
I don't remember that being on a slide. I don't remember there being a, is that somebody's rules? I presume it's not our rules.
Right, this is part of Florida Housing.
Okay, I don't even remember an icon on the presentation that said something about must comply with all eligibility guidelines per Florida Housing, whatever. I mean, because I, I would hope if that was a bullet on the slide, I would have asked, well, what are those guidelines? Just out of curiosity.
And I'm not questioning-
What are the, so what are the other guidelines? I mean, that, that would have been a pertinent part if we're going to put, if we're going to publicly put out their press release on Monday saying start applying on Tuesday. You know, I, I had an issue with the press release because it didn't, I didn't think it, you know, explicitly stated that we had locations in District Five that are going to be taking, taking applications, as in the Melina Community Center and the, and the Towne Century Library. You know, I wanted to clearly say that my constituents have an opportunity to turn these in as well, you know, at a place other than downtown or on the portal. But I didn't know about the eligibility stuff. I mean, so is that making it where, have we had a lot of people apply that are not eligible?
Yes, Meredith's not here, but I can, I can just read you-
Yes, we've had a lot of people apply that aren't eligible?
That's correct.
That's not good. I suppose they're not, I would presume they're not happy.
Probably not, but we have told the ones that come to Brownsville and even the one that's called that we are putting them on a waiting list for the Escamby CARES family and individual and family assistance.
Have we subsequently put out a press release that outlines what the eligibility guidelines are?
For, for this, for this, yes, so it was on the press, I mean, I don't know if it was on the press release, but it was on our website.
Well, I can tell you it was not on the regular press release. I can just tell you that.
We did provide an update on September first.
Well, I didn't see the update get carried in the news. I did see the initial one get carried in the news. Has somebody seen the updated one with the new guidelines? I mean, do we know that that was carried somewhere? I haven't seen it, is the only reason I say that.
Has it been released to our media partners?
It, it was, it was released. I can look at the time. It looks like about two twenty-five on September first.
I mean, my understanding was you, you had to be impacted in order to receive it. And we've even said that for the families. I mean, for the families, one that we put out is you have to check that you were impacted.
Well, there's nothing between being impacted and saying you have to be employed. I mean, retired people are impacted as well.
I think they were saying that if you're on, if you're on disability, you didn't receive any less loss of, of-
But they're, they're saying, but that's not what we went out-
There's multiple ways, there's multiple ways to be impacted. Not just impacted by a decrease in revenue. You're impacted by an increase in expenses. You have increased medical bills or you have increased transportation expenses because transportation's not available to you. You have increased, you have an increased financial burden in your household because another person that lives with you is not, is, is not employed, you know? I mean, there's, I, I don't understand how.
Well, I mean-
I don't understand how that's not, I don't understand how that's not a part of our discussion. We talked about this for thirty minutes that night or twenty minutes.
This isn't our program, though.
It, it's our program when we vote on it. I mean, it becomes, it becomes my program when, when we're putting out the press release, say, go to escambycounty.com and apply for these, apply for these things. Even if it's not our eligibility guidelines, it becomes our program when we vote on it, in my opinion. I mean, and then I end up, I end up accountable for people that say, well, why didn't somebody tell me that I wouldn't be eligible if this? You know, there are things that we don't discuss necessarily on the board at length, but we did discuss this at length. And the guidelines, I don't, I'm not, and Robert, I'm not saying I have an issue with the guidelines necessarily, they're, they're not ours. But somebody's got to tell us that there are, that there are more defined, there are more defined rules than what, than what we were talking about. I mean, and, and I don't think it's that the board at that time would have been mad at anybody if they just said, you know, additionally, there are these guidelines that are state guidelines. Okay, well, let's make sure that we let citizens know that. I mean, that, that's, in my opinion, that's an appropriate discussion for us to have had and-
And Robert, I, I concur with Steve. In, in no way do I care about the restriction. The state put the restrictions down. It wasn't thirty minutes, it was multiple meetings of hours of presentations that we received. And the harsh reality of it is, people showed up in wheelchairs, crippled. They came in expecting to get help and now the expectation is you're not eligible. And had we just put that information out, it would have been a lot smoother. And so, you know, I'm not going to, you know, rehash spilt milk. I, I think that the administrator is moving forward to take care of it. But certainly, there's going to have to be some consideration in the reason I bring that up. We have seniors, we have veterans and, and people with disabilities that showed up. I mean, at least, I think they did over seven hundred applications. I certainly, as we move forward, don't want those citizens to not receive help. And I would argue a little bit, Robert, that it's not our guidelines, but when we spent money marketing the program, putting up portals, we, we took the receipt of that money to administer it out. So, it is our money and it is our responsibility to clearly communicate that with the citizens. And that is a, it is a problem for me when I have seniors who would come and realize that they're not eligible. And so, had I known, it would have been a great opportunity for us to get that information out.
And so, yes. What, what about self-employed people that don't have an employer to certify something?
The requirement says that they have got to show that they've had an impact to their impact, income. So, if someone's self-employed, if they can demonstrate that there was a decrease, a loss of income-
Okay, what's an acceptable way to demonstrate that if I'm self-employed?
So, we're going to have to demonstrate either they'll have like their quarterly reports that they file, like from the beginning of the year and then, you know, after March.
Self-employed people don't, I mean, they, they don't file quarterly reports necessarily. I mean, that's not how, I mean, that's not, I mean-
We have to have some sort of documentation.
A bank statement showing deposits?
So, they could show if they do regular deposits, that can demonstrate a loss of income, if they are regularly paying themselves.
Who, who reviews what they, what they submit to say that's an acceptable form of documentation for loss, for reduction of income?
You know, we have several case managers reviewing all these files, but then I will-
The county or the state?
County.
I mean, we, we, we would be the people, you know, that, that review whatever documents they submit.
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I won't say most. A lot of self-employed people, I mean, you know, don't have accountants that do, that do quarterly statements form and stuff and they, they might not use QuickBooks, but, you know, but a bank, a bank account that's, you know, Stevens, you know, Stevens Concrete Company that shows, you know, that shows a reduction year over year in deposits into that business account, that would be something that's unacceptable.
They can demonstrate that and we'll certify that, yes.
All right, so how many people, how many people have we had apply that, that at least at first blush are eligible?
So, when we did, and this is as of five o'clock last night, there were, I have all, I'm putting back there. Yeah, the, there are about two hundred of the almost nine hundred applicants that did not, that they wrote on there, they checked no, that they were not, did not have any COVID impact and they submitted something anyway. So, so we probably, as of last night, it was about six hundred and eleven, I'd say, something like that.
All right, and we have the, and we have funding to approximately fund three hundred?
Well, if, if they're all get max, maxed out, that would be what it would be.
All right, so are we-
For this round of funding.
Yeah, I understand. So, are we stopping taking applications now with the presumption if we have six hundred that may or may, that may be quasi-eligible? And we have funds, I mean, you know, I, I think that we have to presume the majority of applicants are going to be applying for maximum, for the maximum benefit. I mean, and I think in good faith, we have to assume at least.
Yeah, not, not all of them needed the maximum, so obviously-
Well, if, if, if they-
If they all needed it.
If they averaged half, six hundred would eat through it. If three hundred would eat through it at the full amount, then six hundred would eat through it at the, at a half, at a half max. So, if we have approximately six hundred that may be eligible, then that would theoretically work through all our funds. So, are we going to stop taking applications?
That's my question.
Because I don't, I don't want to continue to take something if there's not going to be, you know, if there, if there's not going to be funds there.
If we're going to deny hundreds of people, I want to stop. I mean, because that's when our phones are going to continue to ring.
At least they're not, won't spend the time making applications.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Give the mic back to you.
Yeah.
So, there were two hundred who checked Meredith that they were not eligible. How many people, have we gone through the six hundred to determine who are the people that were getting retirement benefits or Social Security? So, of that six hundred, do we know how many of those who are not eligible because of?
I haven't gone through all of those, no. But most of the, most of those that checked no, I mean, it's because, because of that. Because the question specifically says, have you had a loss of income due to COVID-19? And so, with those that I've looked at, of those, the situation is that they have Social Security. Well, their income has not changed due to COVID-19.
So, this is, it's only revenue-based, though. This, this program is only revenue-based to the, to the applicant. If they haven't had a decrease in revenue, then they're not eligible regardless of an increase in expenses. That's the, I mean, not a trick question.
And is it a sixty percent reduction or is it just a reduction?
It is, you have experienced some sort of loss.
So, it can be a five percent loss or a three percent?
You've had a, you've either lost your job or you've had some loss of income due to COVID.
So, there's not a number, there's not a sixty percent number?
No.
So, do you think most people are, are, are self-certifying in eligibility? Would you, do you perceive that?
So, that, that two hundred that I pulled and looked at last night, just briefly from the day I pulled, I'm like, they've self-certified, no. And those are the, those are going to be the ones that they're reporting that they have Social Security, it's their income. So, I don't think beyond that.
Did those, did those go through the rest of the process, even though they checked that box? Did they, did they finish? Okay, are the applicant, are the information, is the information they provided us of value to be duplicated for the other programs or?
Claire and I have talked about that, you know, making sure that she has all of those names in contact for the family assistance grants.
Is there enough information in what they've supplied to serve as an application on the other side?
Well, I, I guess depending on what y'all decide today, probably there's more than enough information.
Okay, all right, and, you know, not trying to-
We don't ask for their tax, twenty nineteen tax return. So, if y'all decide to do that, then that, we don't, yeah, we don't have that.
All right, well, not, I don't think, nobody's, Meredith, I mean, I'm certainly not trying to give you a hard time about it, but in retrospect, I wish when we, when we have stuff like this, you know, even if it's something that the board's not going to be happy about, because if you tell us that, look, there's eligibility guidelines that are going to kick out some of your constituents, none of us are going to like that because we want all of our constituents to, to have an opportunity to get everything. But if that's the rules, that's okay. And I don't think that there's going to be a huge negative pushback from the board at that time. But when it doesn't get discussed and then we have, you know, then it comes out later, I think that's the reason for, for my point of view. That's, that's, that's what, that's what I'm personally upset about, but.
And Mr. Chairman, Meredith, Claire, I know you, you guys have worked hard. I've seen you work late at night along with the administrator. I just think that it's just fair to get that information out. And I'll, I'll tell you, it is still confusing that y'all need to make a clarification because I actually went with citizens who thought that they had to have a sixty percent reduction. I didn't pull that number out of the sky, Claire. That was something that was said to people that did have to have a sixty percent reduction. And so, we need to clear that up.
None of our stuffs has that. There are other local governments that are doing things like that. And so, I don't know if Santa Rosa's doing that or something, so I think sometimes-
And I concur with you and, and that was said, but the problem is, we did not put out the information that citizens can have. And you're right, it's easy for people to confuse these programs if we don't put it out, you know, in, in simple terms that everybody can understand. But I appreciate, and, and Mr. Chairman, I would be very supportive, Meredith, that those citizens who waited in line and filled out those applications and went online, that if we could use those applications without making them resubmit and at least communicating that with them. I mean, I, I think I'm very supportive of, particularly, I've been very supportive of your staff and you in getting this program out and, and working it. But I just would want it to be a little more efficient because unfortunately, the commissioners at the size of the people that get yelled at in Walmart when people don't get the assistance that they want. And so, people are being evicted, people are hungry and people are hurting. And when people, the only hope they see is when they see a news release that they can get their rent, utilities or mortgage paid. And it becomes somewhat untrue because they didn't meet the requirement. And I don't care about whatever the requirements are, like Commissioner Berry, I'm fine with them. Just, just say what they are. And if people meet them, they meet them. If they don't, they don't.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
And Ms. Gilli, I think that you got on that and I think we're on the same, because I, literally you and I were there and you understand the frustration and the communication. So, I appreciate your help immediately on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else.
I do have a question. The slide that's on, Meredith, is this, is this your, your prepared slide?
I provided that information, yes, sir.
Okay, so is this, when you referenced earlier that as of five o'clock yesterday, that's, that's, that's the data that you used, the five o'clock yesterday data for the preparation of this slide as well? Okay, all right.
So, Steve, we know, I mean, I guess, you know, Meredith, when would you recommend cutting it off? I mean, because I can care with the chairman, I mean, here's the reality of it. You know, I've gotten beat up, you know, for two days in terms of people who are part of those two, in two hundred phone calls. That's a lot of phone calls that come to commissioners, the people that-
Trust me, our staff is aware of that and the emails that are coming in that we're all making.
Oh, yeah, you can see my phone. I mean, yeah, I, I can't answer it because so many people that, you know, had depended on me to at least assist them that I can't.
Don't, don't clear your voicemails, because if you clear your voicemails, then they can leave more voicemails.
Leave more, more voicemails. Well, I was thinking of, I was thinking of letting LJ clear. He, he does virtual, he doesn't have a lot to do on his breaks. So, if, if, I don't want to give people false hope. So, if we're going to keep this portal, keep this application over and they're not eligible and it just rolls over, fine. But if we're looking at you already have eight hundred applications and theoretically, well, practically, what Commissioner Berry said, you probably only going to serve three hundred people, at what point do you want to cut it off, Meredith?
I would recommend closing it tomorrow. That would be my recommendation.
Five o'clock today or something, I mean, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, five o'clock today or five o'clock tomorrow?
I will, five o'clock tomorrow, because not everybody's on there is going to be eligible. I mean, I have pulled out those, so the ones that I pulled out of, out of last night, we, we see we're at about one point one million. If everybody in there gets, that's what they submitted. But I will also note, those numbers include people that ask for more than the three thousand. 3,000 maximum that you set, so that also, that number's also inflated.
So how much do you have, 800,000, 900,000?
About 850,000.
So you're at 1.1 now?
Right, and if we can spend this, we do anticipate that the state will provide more, so if we cannot get, as we're going through, hopefully we can use a next round to pull the, those that we couldn't assist.
Do, do you want to say five o'clock tomorrow, and then, when is, when's the next time that we're together? Well, we're together on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
If, so, okay, so five o'clock tomorrow, and then if we want to reopen, we could reopen, we could reopen it, you know, when we're together on Tuesday, we could give that direction, if we wanted to reopen for a few more days next week?
Sure, that sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable.
Is that good with you, Meredith? If we say, so do we want to go ahead and put out a press release saying that we're going to, you know, we're going to dis, or cease taking applications online tomorrow at five, or in person tomorrow at five? Okay, Janice, you got, you got that, and then, you know, and, and I want to tell you, I, I appreciate the work that you're doing, I, I realize it is, you know, the way, and the way that we're taking applications is probably rather labor-intensive and person, you know, personnel-intensive, and, and I appreciate that, and, and Janice, I think that the board's direction was clear last week, that if, you know, as quickly, and I think it's, I think it's going to be clear that there's going to need, need to be help bodies, and I hope that we're, I hope that we're already doing something to try to, to try to procure some more bodies, even if it's through Blue Arbor, you know, some, some temporary people, you know, I mean, I know that we're, I know we want, you know, to take applications for direct county employees, but if there, if, if we need to pick up, you know, a few people, you know, in a more expedient fashion to start, you know, tomorrow or Monday or whatever, you know, we want you to get the resources that you need to be successful, because you're going to, your, your success is going to be, you know, publicly, so, you know, publicly vetted, so, you know, we want you to have the help that you need.
And Mr. Chairman, I will say, that the initial site that they set up at Brownsville, I was pretty impressed with the people that Claire had, and I, I think that, you know, it, it's important, you know, I wouldn't have expected for all of the Blue Arbor workers or staff to clearly understand it, because I didn't. I mean, you know, people were saying one thing, and I said another thing, you know, and so.
Me too.
One thing I would ask Meredith and Claire.
We just add it to a long list of things that we've been wrong about.
Oh, yeah, well.
That grows, it grows by, it grows by the day.
And I'm going to take the responsibility for the things that I've, I've done wrong, and I've, I've made a lot of mistakes, and we'll probably make a few more before the day is over, but I would expect Claire and Meredith, that those people who waited, who took the opportunity to fill out, that they would know that they're eligible for the next round that comes down to 15th, and if they're not eligible for the 15th, that you tell them that as well, that you just don't have them lingering with an application with hopes that, oh, you missed this one, and then on the 15th, then you tell them that, oh, you're not eligible for that one as well. I can just tell you, that's going to be a disaster and problematic for me, if, if that's not communicated to them.
Any, any in-person, and I speak for my staff, and I know Brownsville as well, if we have talked to someone on the phone or been in person, and we, as a staff person, realizes that they're not eligible, we've directly told them there, so they don't waste the time filling out the form, and then we have informed them about the next round that's coming up, that that would be more suitable for their situations.
Right, and if our staff is educated, Claire, on, on, I, I serve on the Board of Community Action, we have an allocation of funds, we have, Open Doors has an allocation of funds, if they don't meet our criteria, then let's at least facilitate and direct them to go to some of the other agencies that have received CARES Act money, from United Way to Community Action to Opening Doors, and so maybe there is a, a program for them if our program cannot accommodate them, and so I would just ask, they're still citizens of Iscambie County that the five of us represent, and so we should do everything within our power to help facilitate that, and I concur with Commissioner Berry, Claire, I mean, we, we don't have to, confidentiality has nothing to do with a person being a permanent county employee, I mean, we just need confident, caring people to go out and do that.
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner, we have been doing that, and after the board meeting tonight, however you guys decide to, to approve this, we are going to be, I'm sorry, call the applicants that we have on our waiting list and giving them that checklist of things that they're going to need to apply, so we are pushing that forward even before the press release get out there. We're getting ahead of the game this time to get that information out there to those constituents.
Just make sure your information in the press release is the same information.
Oh, absolutely, sir, it will be.
Commissioner Bregashly, Commissioner Berry.
No, no, I'm just waiting for DPZ.
Yes, sir, Robert. Yes, sir.
Just making sure, what locations do we have in the city that we were meeting with people, and also, you know, I, I, I think it is important that we try to. Well, that too, but, but also, I think as we look forward to some of these programs, I would like to try to make sure that at least a weekend day is included. I understand that by closing it tomorrow at five, a weekend day would not be included in this program due to overwhelming applicants, but just something to consider, because, you know, yeah, I mean, there are people that are getting back to work and are, are working Monday through Friday or something like that, so, schoolteachers, cafeteria workers, yeah, custodial, everything like that, so. Right.
We have a, we do have a PowerPoint later to show you that has a map, and it also has times. It includes weekends, and it also includes until 8:00, 8:00 PM in the evening.
But I, I just want to make sure that, that city residents had ample opportunity to come in person in the last two days.
Over that one.
For the current, you're asking for the current, the rent and mortgage program?
Yes.
Our office has been open eight to five every day, and, you know, I have been answering phone calls and emails after five, so I think that people have had adequate opportunity. If they need someone to help them, they need to come down here and have one of our staff. Brownsville Community Center is open for walk-in, and then we've also had all the different libraries and other community centers that were listed in that updated press release.
And I think Commissioner Bender wanted to know exactly what locations were within the city.
Where they've been taking, I don't, there's not been personnel deployed anywhere other than the county building in Brownsville.
If they're taking, there's only been two, two places for this particular program to do, help with get, accepting the applications, our office here or the Brownsville Community Center.
Because I've, I've got a number that are in District Five for the next round, but the feasibility of, of, you know, trying to have those staff to, this round doesn't, you know, didn't seem powerful.
And Robert, I was very supportive of that, and that would have been my thought, that they would be open, but I, I think now, in that she's up to 800 applications, we're going to have to close it. We certainly need to make sure we get it right on the 15th.
Yep.
And the downtown library, I presume, would have been, would have been one of the spots that could have been turning, turning in applications.
If somebody needed to pick up, correct, so the downtown library was open for folks to pick up application.
So it does say all West Florida public libraries, which would include the downtown library.
Tryon. Legion Field.
Yep, and, and also Triumph.
So, yeah, and, and Robert, that's what I'm afraid of, Meredith, and you may add a little insight, and I don't want to take up any more time, Mr. Chairman, but I know that some people, because they've reached out to me, stopped down by the downtown library in Triumph and just picked up an application, and so now, you have 800 that are returned right now, correct? That spreadsheet.
So that, as of last night, that included all online and all emailed applications and all walk-in receipts.
And, and, and I, I just add that, I know that there's probably hundreds of more that were distributed that have not been turned in, I just wanted to be aware of that.
There probably, there probably are, but there probably are a lot of people that picked up, because I've personally talked to some, that they've picked up an application, and as we talk through, they're not eligible, they've not been eligible, so not everybody that picked up something may necessarily be eligible.
I understand that, and, but I would anticipate there are some that are still going to turn them in.
Probably, and, and I will also note, you know, in addition to us getting some additional funding, hopefully, from Florida Housing for this, we still do have CDBG funds that we can also use for rent and mortgage assistance, but we've held off on that.
With that same criteria or without that same?
No, it'll be a lower income criteria, and then we would just have to discuss what parameters y'all would want for that, but we've pushed this out, because this has an expenditure deadline by December 30th, so there's more, it's more critical to get this money out time, time-wise.
Maybe September 30th.
Yeah, exactly. I think you'll have all this spent by five o'clock tomorrow.
I, I hope so, so.
And, and then didn't the governor extend the evictions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Through, through October.
October 1st or?
Yeah, October 1 or October 31.
Hmm, I think it's October 1, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so just 30 of those.
And Robert, you know, and, and Robert, just to add on to what, what you just said, when, you know, because people are listening and watching, you have landlord and tenants, and we both have friends on, on both sides, the landlord side and the tenant side, tenants must realize that although the moratorium has been extended, when the notice called, you're not going to be exempt, you're going to have to pay those funds, and so I, a, a lot of people who are not paying, if you have the ability to pay and get assistance, I encourage people to do it, because I can assure you that the eviction rate is going to be very high as soon as he lifts that moratorium. October 1, and, and in fairness to some of our landlords, they also have mortgage that they have to pay. Yeah, so, I mean, so it's tough.
Although a number have been able to take advantage through their, through their business of the PPP program, because they're, they're, they're instantly eligible as, as part of PPP, so.
Some of them are a little slicker than others.
That's right, savvy, savvy.
Savvy, savvy, yeah. S-I-S-L-A, I don't know.
Madam Administrator, all right, board, what, so, you know, in the presentation and the discussion this morning related to DPZ and outline field aid is, is in lieu of the, of the lengthy discussion this evening, so my intention was not to have the presentation and, and lengthy discussion both, both settings for us, but you ready to go? Are we ready to go into that?
Sure.
Hearing no opposition. Janice, would you, can you get them queued up, and let's get into this and?
There we go.
Good morning, every, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, great, I will ask, because we're having a bit of a, of an echo issue, if we can reserve the questions till the very end, but having said that, good morning, Commissioners, and on behalf of the DPZ team, we are sorry we're not there in person, however, we're pleased to provide you with our initial economic and market findings that we think we know will help inform our planning efforts for this upcoming charrette. In addition to our analysis, our technical analysis, we've interviewed quite a few stakeholders, and we think we have a firm understanding of what is required and needed for the site. Nothing is off the table, I wanted to let you know that very emphatically. In fact, the site's very large, and we know it can accommodate not only job creation, but the community amenities that are going to be required as well. So because today's presentation is really focused on the economic and the fiscal and the market findings, I'm going to give you a very brief overview of where we are. In our presentation, I'm going to share my screen, take barely five minutes, because you've seen it, you have it, happy to answer any questions you have at the end, and I'm going to really give the time to Joe Minicozzi of Urban Three and Peter Bizelli of Whitman for their presentation. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
I can't play it. Sorry, bear with me. Not sure why I can't move my screen. There we go. This is where we are in the process, of course, we are finalizing phase one, about to turn in our interim report, and you'll be getting a presentation today of most of it. Our charrette is upcoming in a little under three weeks. This is the schedule for it. Essentially, we're going to have a session at the beginning where we hear from the different stakeholders, continue to hear from the different stakeholders, have a series of targeted meetings, have some live design sessions as well, we'll take a pause, give plans, upload plans for the public to see, put them in, in some public facility within Iscambie County as well, and then come back and regroup and assimilate what we've heard, and try to come up with a final master plan or multiple master plans. We've begun to see, interestingly, that up to 75% of the people who have visited the website are happy to be participating through a virtual format, which I think is, is encouraging. And of course, we've launched this website and, and engagement platform, where we're beginning to get a lot of feedback from members of the community in terms of what's required. As you can see, for those of you who may not have had a chance to visit it, it's broken up into a series of different sections where people can map their ideas, they can take a survey, they can understand what's going on, and where we are in the process, view recordings such as this one, for example, that will eventually be uploaded as well if they are unable to participate and contact the team. And this is, this is different to what you have right now, because in the past two weeks, we've had about twice as many people engage with us on the website. As you can see, it's trending up, which is positive, and this is just the, the backend of the, of the project website, which Travis could address if you have any questions about it, which just shows where responses are coming from, how many people have visited the website. We want to make sure we have representation from the entire county, of course, and it helps us identify any potential gaps. Examples of what we're mapping in terms of our technical analysis, of course, there's a lot of these drawings that you will see in the interim report we provide you with. We've also done a sort of summary of some of the bigger projects that surround the OLFH website to try and understand what's down the pipeline and what's coming in. For the transportation analysis, this is what Nelson Nygaard has focused on, a lot of information and data gathering, the county staff has been very helpful in helping us gather that. They summarize existing plans and conditions, assessed the, the transportation networks, and, and put this all into a memo. And here's some examples of what they've looked at, for example, really done an assessment of the, of the traffic, pedestrian and bicycle network, and trying to understand transit as well. Lots and lots and lots of projects that have been approved in the past 10 years, 10 years in Beulah, and trying to understand how have brought on expansions to Nine Mile Road, the potential Beulah interchange, Frank Reader extending, even Beulah Road extending up to I-10 as well, all these different transportation improvements that are needed now, because Beulah is expanding at, 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 at quite a rate. And of course, this is interesting to us to see that the majority of the people who work in Iscambie County, at least in the Beulah area, live in Iscambie County, they don't really commute from outside the area, which is positive. And there were some intersection analysis that was done, you can see from the site, you'll see the detailed analysis of it in the report as well, the assesses the, the, the level of surface of these different intersections. And their preliminary findings are in that, will be in the report as well. Same with the civil and environmental analysis, we have a solid understanding of what this, what the site set, site opportunities, I should say, strengths are as well, and what the constraints are. And we'll be working closely with GIT to really ensure that, for example, we heard from Commissioner, one of, some of you, when we interviewed you, that the Perdido Bay is, is very important, you know, that the, the water quality of Perdido Bay be retained, so stormwater management strategies are going to be a key component of how we handle the, the, the stormwater that comes out of this, this site. And on that very, very brief note, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Joe Minicozzi, who will then give his presentation and then turn it over to, to Peter.
Great. Thank you, Marina, can you, can you all hear me now? Great, thanks. My name's Joe Minicozzi, I'm with a company called Urban Three based in Asheville, North Carolina, and our company focuses on visualization of economic information, so we, we do this because citizens are shareholders in a corporation, the county's incorporated. I have a past history of working in real estate development, which is basically a smaller version of what a city and a county is. So, so the key component of any real estate development or running a government is the component of land and how it produces. So when you talk to farmers, farmers are always talking about economic components, crop yield per acre, fertilizer per acre, labor per acre, so there's units, units of, of understanding that they're, they're thinking about their, their product. So if I could take your brain and show you your brainstem activity, which is in blue in this MRI image, and your creative thought process, which is your green stuff, can I do the same for your community? Can we do a visualization of what's going on with the cash flow of your economics? So, so we basically, that's simply put, we're the radiologists that come in before the surgery to do the CAT scan, and we'll do another one after the surgery to show the performance. So just a little way that we explain it, I'll just use our community as a reference, this is my county, this is Buncombe County, and this is typically how people look at real estate, and I have like this big park right here, this is part of the Blue Ridge Parkway, so it's non-taxable, so I don't care about it, it's not paying me taxes, I'm just going to be a little crude about it. I have low value in green and high value in purple, so this is, purple's over $70 million an acre, so this is, this big purple splotch right here, or is the Biltmore State, so the Biltmore State's worth $100 million, but it's really not a fair way of looking at it, because it's a 180,000 square foot house sitting on 8,000 acres of land, so it's like having the biggest gas tank and bragging about your miles, it doesn't tell you about your productivity. So rather than total, total value, let's do value per acre or miles per gallon, and that's a different map, but I'll just show it to you in 3D. So, so as a 3D visual. So, so as a 3D visualization, you can see where your taxes come from. So my county, we pay six mils up here, so think of a six mil blanket laying across this model, where's the county getting its revenue? And, you know, you can clearly see downtown Asheville popping up right here. But as a model, we can also see what's going on with our little cousin over here in Black Mountain, which is a little village of about six thousand people, but you can see it's little downtown. And in defense of folks that live out here in Fairview, they're paying more taxes than what their friends are that are a little bit further out. They have no idea what the other parts of the model are producing. So when you convey this larger graphic, everybody can see how the corporation functions and how, how you can actually replicate new wealth in other areas. So for, for, for Escambia, I mean, the first thing that we have to do as North Carolinians is we have to figure out your tax system, and your tax system is different from ours. Ours is a little simple. So in North Carolina, ours is a pretty dummy one. It's just, it's called a straight line system, where we have a market value, everybody gets the same taxable reduction to a taxable value. So we didn't, we don't differentiate between commercial and residential. And then there's your tax rate and then your tax bill. So that's, that's it. In Florida, for let's say, you, first off, you have your, your mill rate, your, your county mill rate's about seven point six mils on, on exemptions is where it starts to differentiate. So if you're a homestead, you get twenty-five thousand dollars right off the top, you get another twenty-five thousand dollars because the state thought that was awesome. I'm sure the citizens think it's awesome too, but that's coming out of your property tax bucket when that value drops, because you're taxing less value. So when you, when you run the numbers on that, you know, for a hundred thousand dollars of value, commercial stays the same, residential drops. So, you know, to explain to the, to the shareholders, it's just like be aware that you've been given a gift by the state. One of the things that I think is kind of funny, I've, I've actually practiced and lived in Florida for twelve years, I didn't realize that you were having a hard time getting seniors to move to Florida. Your state adopted a senior citizen twenty-five thousand dollar discount, which is an incentive. But anyway, putting that aside, this is the way the taxes look for, for that hundred thousand dollars. So the citizen's paying seven hundred dollars on a hundred thousand if they were a commercial property, and only about four hundred if you were resident. Now, the crazy thing is the State's ours, our homes amendment that's been added to this pile. So you essentially put a cap on your growth of value, so commercial can only grow up ten percent and then it stops, and residential caps at three percent or CPI, which is ever lower of the two. We actually stole this chart from Brevard County. They did this really great chart to show you the difference between total vet market value and assessed value. Now, what happens, and this is just to inform the citizen, is that this is what happens when the market takes off before the, the last boom, and then everything busts, and then the market takes off again. Well, your valuation stays down here, right? So when you drop down this, or you can't creep out more than three percent or two, or CPI, which is ever lower of the two. Now, the crazy thing is, as the gap widens, it starts to get higher again, what happens to the cost of running to government? Is it following the red line or is it following the blue line? So your cost of, of concrete and labor, piece of wood, whatever, is following the blue line and peeling off, but yet you've restricted your revenue, or your state has for you guys. So the market doesn't behave the way that, the way that your tax system works, which actually ironically makes it more difficult to run a government in good times. So your, your community, though, this is your budget, so thirty-four percent of that comes out of property taxes, so that's a pretty important thing to measure. We'll also measure your, your sales taxes as we go along, but just to go through the land for a second, here's your, your county, oops, at a total value. So you can see, again, total value, not value per acre, you can see like the larger parcels start to pop up. When you go value per acre, it shifts, and you can see a little bit of heat down here in South, in, in Pensacola, and here it is in 3D. So again, this is all relative productivity across your whole county. So again, think of it as laying a blanket of millage rate across this to get where your, your taxes are. The reason why we do this is because now we can go into that model and interrogate it to see what kind of buildings can be replicated to grow your, your wealth and productivity in your community off this asset. Now, obviously, the beachfront stuff can only be replicated if you throw another gulf next to it, but within, once you get inland, that's where the architecture kicks in. Here's Pensacola, total value and value per acre. Again, total value, value per acre. Here's Pensacola zoomed into the model, and then downtown Pensacola, total value, value per acre. And you can see it all shift to Palafoc Street, once, once you get the, the value per acre. Taxable, non-taxable, these are other maps that we're doing for you all, so that, you know, your, your county's about eighteen percent non-taxable, which is about average of what we see for, for counties. The city's about thirty percent non-taxable, and your downtown's about thirty-two percent non-taxable, which is about average what we typically see, particularly for a county seat. So from a unit of productivity, Pensacola is about three percent of the county's area, it's about seventeen percent of the county's production, so that's a one, seven ratio of productivity. Think of it this way, if you have a hundred people and you're, if you have a shoe, shoe shop and you're selling shoes, and one person is producing six times their, 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 their footprint in, in sales, that's pretty good. You're, the downtown is a piece of the city, is eight percent, it's producing twenty percent of the city's property taxes, let's take a one to three ratio for the city, that's a little on the low side, we typically see them around a one to six in communities. And then for your downtown, as a shareholder of the county, it barely shows up, but it's producing three percent of your property taxes. That's like a one to seventeen ratio of productivity, that's really high for the county. So that's, are there pieces within that that can be replicated? Much like you saw Asheville and then Black Mountain, we had mama bear and baby bear. Is there a replicable smaller version that could be created somewhere in the county? Now, the other thing that we'll do, just, these are, these are kind of nerdy, but they're fun. This is, we can turn off all of the buildings and just see how the dirt's valued per acre. And this is the county, and you can see what's going on in downtown Pensacola, and here's, here's Pensacola, and then zooming in. Well, before we zoom into downtown, I just want to highlight this one little intersection right here. There's weird things that are baked into policies and standards. You can see how the out parcels are so much more valuable than the big thing behind it, because that's a standard within assessment. I would argue that it's a little bit perverse to have that standard, because land is land, and it shouldn't matter if I've got more of it, it shouldn't be cheaper, because it's still land. Like if I buy a bigger diamond, diamonds don't get cheaper because they have more carrots in them, you know? So, so land should be a similar component, and land is actually more scarce than diamonds. But anyway, we always do these models, just so you can see them. And here's the, the downtown, and then here it is in 3D. And you can see the value change of what happens when a new residential comes in, it pops up, but it doesn't pop up more than the commercial real estate. And also remember that cap that's on it, we're downtown, and while property gets, gets a value cap, and residential gets those additional discounts. Your jobs, as Marina pointed out earlier, you recirculate about eighty-eight thousand people, live and work within Escambia County, you import sixty-four thousand people, and you export thirty-five thousand people. When you get into the Beulah area, you're, you're, you're exporting ten thousand people, you're importing thirteen thousand people, and you only recirculate sixteen hundred people. So that's, that means that there's an opportunity for jobs and employment here, that there, there's, there's plenty of folks in here, in this area already at ten thousand people that are moving out, basically, and that can be either recaptured, or some of these folks that are moving in from jobs could relocate closer into the area as well. So you have an opportunity for housing and jobs. Just to go through some of the, the property types, we always go grab the Walmarts first. Is there sort of, there are control subject, this is your neighborhood Walmart, they're about half a million an acre. To put that in comparison, it's pulling more than the Lowe's, the Home Depot, and the Target. So the, the little Walmart box is actually more productive than the big boxes. Your, your Publix is, is actually more, more valuable than that. When you get to the mall, it drops down, University Place Mall is, is pulling four hundred thousand, which is less than the Walmart. But you want to see something, conversely, if you just stack a second story onto it and you get a little bit more dense, this is ten point five million an acre, and that's just a two-story building. Now, obviously, when you get closer to the, to the, the gulf, you get twelve million dollars an acre with these taller buildings, twelve point four million here for this one. But by comparison, this building's more valuable at twelve point six million here. This one's nineteen million, super tall. And even though that's nineteen million, this one that was recently added to downtown is one, two, three, four, five stories, pulling twenty-nine million. So this is five stories and twenty-nine, this is however many more stories, and it's less value per acre, even though it has the, the views. So, so just, this is mostly to just be aware of the productivity and what you can get, and let our biases go, that just because it's tall doesn't mean it's more valuable. So your industrial parks, obviously, these are a completely different animal, because they consume a lot of real estate, and the buildings aren't all that productive from a value standpoint. Here's some comps to show you, this is just twenty-three thousand an acre. So we've gone from millions down to twenty-three thousand, twenty-eight thousand, a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And remember, the Walmart is five hundred thousand by comparison. This is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand at Heritage Oaks Commerce Park, the Elysian, I'm sorry, Ellison Industrial Park is pulling a hundred and sixty-six thousand. Now, again, if we're talking jobs, this is six point seven jobs per acre, this area. This is sixteen jobs per acre in a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. This building here is five million and sixty jobs per acre. So sixty jobs per acre versus six, so it's ten times the jobs per acre, and I don't know how many more times the, the value, but we're going from a hundred and sixty thousand to five million, five point four million. So when we say jobs, or we think of jobs, particularly industrial jobs, if the industrial job is in an off, it's really just a different kind of office building, put it into an office use that's going to produce value rather than an industrial use, industrial buildings should be saved for manufacturing, noxious activity, stuff like that. Office uses should be in a more productive typology. So basically, half and eight, or half of this Halifax condo building, if we just cut it in half, this is its floor plan, it would equal the entire seven acre Walmart in, in value. So apples to apples, that much land will equal all of this. We grabbed some infill shotgun homes, these, these little homes here, it's kind of shotgun style, which is a traditional southern style of architecture. Three of those guys right there, if we got ten acres of that, which is about this much development, it would equal the hundred and sixteen acre Vintage Creek Homes. Again, apples to apples, it's the how you use land has a direct correlation to the economic production of your property taxes. On the left, you know, forty-five acres of Spring Street Apartments would equal the, the seven hundred and fifty acre Heritage Park area in comparison. This is how many trust marks would equal the three hundred and six acre Heritage Oaks Office Park. And also, again, remember, sixty jobs per acre on the left versus six, seventeen jobs per acre on the right. So if you wanted to know how many jobs and would, jobs to, to generate it from a land use from a job standpoint, it would be this on the left versus this on the right. So that, that concludes my part of the presentation. It's just mostly to understand, as we go into this, this, this planning discussion, when we talk about the things that need to be in this land as an opportunity or a vision few forward, we need to understand what, what it means economically and financially when we have that ask of, of what we want as, as far as a future design. And so we're hoping to build that vocabulary in, in the process.
Great, Joe, thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen. Are you able to, able to hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you, of course, for the opportunity to work with Escambia County and to further the relationship that my firms developed with, with the county and with the Pensacola area. We've been working in Pensacola since two thousand and twelve on a variety of initiatives, including the South Town Development, the West Main Street Initiative, along with our colleagues here from DPZ and Urban Three and others. And we continue to be excited about the potential expansion of, of the economy in Pensacola, in, in Escambia County, the diversification of the employment base, and in fact, the diversification of the real estate product types that are clearly being absorbed in the market and, and in demand. And so this is a very brief summary today. In fact, I'm really just skimming the surface of the, of the draft report that's been distributed, which is roughly two hundred pages of, of content, building upon, you know, almost a decade at this point of our experience, not only tracking data in the county and in the Pensacola area, but also really understanding the nuance of what type of real estate development appears to be in demand and successful, rather than those that are, are not representative of the highest and best use on any given site. So the OLF8 site is, is a, obviously, one of the largest and highest profile projects in, in all of Escambia County, and represents a tremendous opportunity. Some of the key positive aspects here are the fact that its scale is really unprecedented. Obviously, there are larger parcels that have been developed in the past that may be developed in the future, but none really with the, the scale of road frontage, potential for direct highway access, proximity to the Navy Federal Campus, and clearly in the zone of growth that's happening throughout the county. This is a tremendous positioning for this project, and to undertake the master planning process in order to encapsulate what the, the outlook is likely to be for the potential of the site over the next couple of decades is, is worth, is worthwhile. It's worth everybody's focus and thoughtfulness. The access, of course, is a key differentiator here, but what this all provides for is not only residential appeal, for example, which is kind of a no-brainer in this particular area, but also commercial appeal. And so obviously, Navy Federal has been a major employment pioneer in this part of the county, but there may be potential to attract similar users, not necessarily of the same size, but because Navy Federal is such an important corporate anchor to this part of the county, there is obviously precedent now, and there is a synergy that could be developed in attracting other employment users to the OLF8 site. And so that commercial appeal is supported by the Navy Federal Campus, but also because of the fact that, you know, we're proposing a, a master plan to mixed-use development that's supportive of all types of uses that develop synergies with each other. The development timing here is positive because of the fact that at the present time, the financing markets for new real estate developments are much more strict in terms of their underwriting criteria, which means that there's less that's being built throughout the region. And in fact, even though we may be looking at a development pipeline that, that gives us pause in some ways, the reality is that, you know, perhaps half or less of that development pipeline may actually be built due to the underwriting standards of the lenders and other equity participants in real estate development. So the timing to really plan the OLF8 site properly and thoughtfully to gather community input, but yet to base the, the master plan on, on market research and the realities of, of the potential land uses here is, is a positive. We have the elbow room to do that in terms of the schedule, and because this is a, a long-term initiative, our forecast is that it may take easily fifteen years to build out this, this site. You know, we have the time here to really do this the right way, and that's, that's a major positive to this. And obviously, having the county participate, as well as Navy Federal's participation in the planning effort, allows for significant financial resources to be dedicated to really doing this the right way. Beulah is, is, offers a tremendous quality of life, not only for residents, but also for, for employees of corporate users. And so you, the idea that we can plan the OLF8 site to take advantage of the locational aspects of Beulah and benefit the entire county along the way creates a great opportunity, again, as a result of the planning effort being done thoughtfully. We have some challenging aspects of this project, which, you know, obviously will be dealt with as it relates to the transportation considerations, potential access to I-10 to the north, but the congestion along Nine Mile Road continues to be a stigmatizing factor to this location. Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm wondering if you're, are you moving your slides? Because we're still stuck on the first one.
I, I was not moving the slides, no.
Okay, got it.
I'm just talking through these items, then I'm going to go fairly quickly through, through the, the remainder. The speculative demand for other commercial uses, office, industrial, and hotel uses is not nearly as strong as for residential and conventional retail uses. And so... And so while we've investigated these uses in depth, it's it's quite clear to us that the demand for office and industrial and also hotel uses here is highly speculative and needs to be undertaken with with a tremendous amount of care. Advancing the slides, obviously, you're familiar with the location. The Navy Federal proximity is a tremendous positive. And throughout the metropolitan area, the population growth continues. And in fact, what's most encouraging is that income growth is is continuing. The higher income cohorts are are growing. The overall population is becoming more affluent, which is a sign of the success of the economy. And so that's a major positive toward building out this development site. The large scale of the project obviously presents a lot of opportunities, but we're looking at this without the constraints of traditional zoning. And so whereas this is the existing zoning map and it's really zoned now for public use, we're assuming throughout this analysis that really the county will will consider all of the outcomes of the master planning process and and proceed accordingly with the allowable zoning. The immediate area is primarily driven by single family homes, but for the the Navy Federal Campus, obviously, the Project 52 development under construction by the Dawson Company across from Navy Federal is nearing completion of its first phase. There's another phase beyond that and some retail space. The 60 Adventure Site is another major development site. There are a few of these projects that have begun to introduce additional retail along Nine Mile Road, although it hasn't been really orchestrated, you know, as one sort of synchronized destination. And so these are individual sliver developments, I'll call them, that that are not really oriented toward each other, but are traditional, you know, mixed use developments loading retail along Nine Mile Road and the residential behind. High income occupations throughout the county is is obviously a hot topic. And, you know, part of the original motivation for the county having acquired the OLF8 site was really to drive jobs here, which is something that we've really spent a lot of time looking into. And in in Pensacola area, in Escambia County, the the, you know, higher paying jobs are really dedicated to four key groups. Physicians in the healthcare sector, which we all know has been growing. General and operations managers of facilities, some management level positions. Other healthcare practitioners and technical occupations and business and financial operations. And generally speaking, high paying jobs, you know, are being characterized as over $60,000 a year. And these are sort of the top earning occupations within those categories. If you start going to other types types of occupations, they generally on average don't break that $60,000 annual income threshold. Cybersecurity now is at an employment of, I think, roughly 1,600 people in in Escambia County and projected growth nationally in this industry is 12, 15%. So there's another possibility here that we can continue to see this growth and support that industry's emergence as the Pensacola area continues as a major focal point for this type of of employment and technology. We've we've analyzed in depth the residential market to begin with. And generally speaking, the rental apartment market continues to outperform the region overall, and in fact, much other much larger stabilized urban markets throughout the United States. And so this level of rent growth that's depicted in this chart demonstrates, in fact, that the Pensacola area is is actually achieving substantive rent growth year over year. It waxes and wanes, but the growth is strong. It's not negative. It's not flat. It's very positive. And in fact, this level of rent growth exceeds what we in fact are finding in the New York metropolitan area or in Chicago presently. So this is a real positive sign that, in fact, the incomes in the Pensacola area and in fact, a continuing shift toward rental housing is is benefiting the rental apartment market and demand for rental apartments. A couple of key comparables that have been developed in the in the neighborhood recently are West Woods Haven and the Inspire Rental Apartments, nearing completion just south of the Navy Federal Campus, will be delivering this fall and represent sort of a new pioneering construction style for this particular location. The for sale housing market is also achieving strong performance whereby the last seven or eight years, we've been seeing effectively steady and record growth, both in terms of the achievable prices and also the number of transactions a year, which demonstrates not only that there are a lot of new homes being built, but also that there's demand for them, that transactions are actually occurring at prices that are increasing. And so what this shows us again is the is the strength of the economy and the diversification of the economy and the the increasing affluence of Escambia County and Santa Rosa County, particularly in this chart, is is a is a positive trend. So a key, a few key takeaways, which is that obviously the for sale homes in the market have been achieving some of their best years. In 2019 was among the strongest. And obviously, the the interest rates, mortgage interest rates are at effectively all time lows. The average home sale price in Escambia and Santa Rosa Counties together was $263,000 in 2019. The there are several key precedent developments that are nearby the site for for sale. Nature Trail being among the largest. Major Creek is under development sort of to the east of the Navy Federal Campus. There is some precedent in the site and absorption waxes and wanes, but Nature Trails recently basically built out the last remaining lots. And the prices in Nature Trail are are among the top in the entire market. The 3,000 for sale housing units that are currently in the development pipeline, again, you know, in our view, only a fraction of these will actually be built due to financing concerns and the idea that that most of these are being developed developed by developers that require construction financing. You know, the the idea here is that there are only, you know, 700 units presently that are that are pending development approval. The remain the remainder have been approved and they have their ability to work their way through the through the market even prospectively before we start construction at the OLF8 site. So whereas the pipeline appears to be dramatic at the moment, it's important to keep in mind that not all of this will be built, number one. And number two, that we are really several years before construction really ever ever starts on the OLF8 site. And so the current market circumstances are not really of of tremendous concern related to the conceptual planning effort to take this this site through the next 15 or 20 years. One of the key observations that we made in the market overall is the fact that there is almost no product differentiation within residential housing types, either in rental apartments or in for sale housing, which means that you either are building, you know, relatively large, single family homes. There's somehow townhome development, although it's rather conventional, or you're building effectively walk up stick built rental apartments. South Town is an outlier, for example, and Inspire Apartments is an outlier. But generally speaking, there hasn't been a lot of product differentiation. And and part of the key to tapping into residential demand and the growing demand for housing throughout throughout the county is to really serve the the niches of affordability and and lifestyle in a way that the market currently isn't isn't satisfying those needs. And so when we talk about the development pipeline, either on the rental side or on the for sale side, you know, these housing units are not all commodities. And at the end of the day, somebody still has to like the the housing unit in order to decide to commit a portion of their income toward purchasing it or renting there. And so to, you know, from our perspective, developing more nuance in the product in the market is a critical factor to not only the success of the OLF8 buildout, but also really to any new housing development throughout the county. The retail market, generally speaking, is concentrated to the east of of the development site. There is almost no retail surrounding Navy Federal, surrounding OLF8. The new Publix Grocery Store is delivering soon along Beulah Road. But generally speaking, you have to drive a while before you actually get into the core of where services are. There's no restaurant to go out to eat at night after work if you're a Navy Federal employee. There's no place to entertain if you live in Nature Trail. The residents of the county that might drive here, for example, from their home elsewhere in the county to go to work at Navy Federal or or in fact, a bit further east, have a general lack of diversity of retail options. And so there is this this zone around OLF8 that is really quite underserved, given the level of housing development that's happening. And we compare that with, in fact, Navy Federal's headquarters campus in Vienna, where we've actually analyzed all of the retail services that surround that campus in Vienna, which is much more densely served with retail space, very low vacancy, the rents are high. It's obviously a different market. It's more affluent market overall. But the idea here is of a major employer and within very close proximity to its campus for its employees, you have a wide variety of retail retail shops and restaurants. And so this is aspirational for the for the OLF8 site, but it demonstrates the spread, in fact, of the of the of the scarcity of retail around this current site. And this is a theme that continues to come up anecdotally and through surveys that that the nearby residents and, in fact, the employees of Navy Federal wish that they had more retail options within close proximity, particularly given how hard it is to get out of the Navy Federal campus on a lunch hour or before you go home to work. Publix Grocery Store obviously is a key anchor now on the west side. But part of our conclusions are that an additional specialty grocery store, other types of necessity retail, childcare, other food and beverage and experiential retail establishments on the OLF8 site ought to do quite well. And those are the areas where, based upon our retail demand analysis, there appears to be significant room for us to tap into unmet demand. And that will only increase, in fact, with ongoing residential development and ongoing employment in this area. The office market has been rather slow and steady. In fact, the the vacancy rates are presently pretty high, but they're expected to stabilize over the next several years. Generally, there's not a lot of new office development being built. There's a lot of office tenants moving from one building to the next, building out new space. But the rents that are being achieved don't really support high quality new construction. And so there is a churn of existing office space that tends to be taking place. Medical offices is the is the exception to that, which is that there has been a concerted effort by both Baptist and Sacred Heart, for example, to grow their footprint of medical services. And certainly, in this particular area of of Escambia County, there is room for for additional medical office space adjacent to Navy Federal's campus. This is woefully underserved at the moment. Generally speaking, we've done a office demand analysis based upon the growth in primarily professional services. That's where most of the growth in the county is projected to occur. And, you know, there's additional growth in healthcare and and education and financial services, but it's really professional services that appear to be growing the most. And based upon a projected annual job creation of office using employment of roughly 267 jobs per year, we're we're projecting that there could be annual demand of approximately 70,000 square feet throughout the county, throughout the metropolitan area. And right now, based upon the annual demand, there is only 34,000 square feet of four and five star high quality office space. You know, and so the types of users where the growth is happening that are demanding high quality office space, new construction effectively is really underserved. And so if we talk about high paying jobs, the types of work environments where where employers that are paying the wages that we are targeting through any sort of a jobs initiative or objective that the county may have to attract these types of employers, the market is underserved for space that can accommodate them. So that's a positive as it relates to the outlook for any sort of a commerce component to OLF8 because the market is underserved with a home where these employers could go to the tune of roughly 34,000 square feet or 40,000 square feet per year. The hotel market is significantly impacted by COVID. And we see this in in the numbers. This map basically demonstrates that there is, there are no hotels remotely close to the Navy Federal Campus or OLF8. They're really concentrated around the airport, around the mall, and obviously downtown. If we take a look at the the key competitive hotels, which are really generally limited service hotels in the market and look at the difference in performance between 2019 and 2020, there was a dramatic falloff, and that's due to COVID and the lack of tourism and the lack of business travel related to 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 COVID. However, we are projecting forward that there will be some stabilization of the market in a couple of years. Not next year. It's likely going to take a couple of years to get there. And if we're looking at the performance of the market in 2024 for a hotel at at the OLF8 site, we believe that an ADR, an average daily rate of approximately $136 could be achieved and then stabilizing over a three year period at occupancy of 74% or $144 per night as an average daily rate. But that's really only assuming that that the hotel market recovers as quickly as we hope it does. Whereas in fact, leisure travel comes back, that there's a clear reason, in fact, why a hotel would choose to locate at the OLF8 site. And that's not apparent to us right now because the the inherent demand for room nights from Navy Federal is maybe 300 room nights a year based upon feedback from them, which really isn't enough to remotely support a hotel. And so we'd really have to be reliant on people choosing to stay in this location if they were doing business downtown or traveling out of the airport rather than staying downtown, for example, in order to make a hotel work. And so part of the success of a hotel on the OLF8 site would really be driven by the idea that we are creating our own demand for for a hotel. And therefore, we've loaded a potential hotel into phase four, the last phase of development. The industrial market has been slow and steady. And over the last decade, there has been slow and steady and positive growth in both rents and and the the occupancy has remained rather level. You'll note that over the next five years or so, this is projected to remain relatively flat. Vacancy is projected to increase just a little bit, and rents are projected to increase just a little bit. But as compared with the the market performance in 2013, 2014, where vacancy rates plummeted, there has been, there's projected to be relatively modest performance. And that's partly due to the fact that there is really almost no positive net absorption happening in the market. And so in the industrial market, while rents are growing very modestly, there's not a lot of inventory that's been built. And in fact, the absorption of vacant space that comes on is really sort of just slowly coming along. And so there's not been a dramatic apparent demand for industrial space. And obviously, industrial is different than office users. And so when we talk about, for example, the potential commerce component at OLF8, innovation component, as we've described it, it's not really necessarily just industrial. It's really also looking towards some of the other emerging users of commercial space like medical office and so forth that might where there might be a stronger market for space. We obviously also did a comparison related to the employment per acre of the per usable acre. And this includes only, you know, there are certain portions of a lot of these parks that are not developable. And so this is really focused on what's usable out of the entire land area. And, you know, generally speaking, the average employment per usable acre has been roughly 10. And obviously, Nate, the Navy Federal Campus is an outlier. But we're, you know, when we look at sort of this commerce is precedent, there's not a lot of employment that's contributed here. When we take a look at sort of the key competitor, and we've interviewed a number of brokers and other stakeholders that are involved in 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 both attracting employers to traditionally industrial uses and also those that are engaged in brokering those types of lease transactions or sale transactions. This is sort of a list by category of of employers that were lost to Santa Rosa County. And it appears to be that Santa Rosa County is able to attract employers more readily because of the fact that there's more land area. Land is less expensive. It's less expensive for an employer to go there and actually occupy space in combination with incentives and so forth. And so this is just since 2019. There have been a number of employers that have been lost to Santa Rosa County. But one thing that's important to take a look at here is that the average income that's paid per job at all of these lost employment opportunities is only $45,000. And so when we talk about high paying jobs, these types of users are not paying high wages. And so from our perspective, to target more traditional office and innovation users and targeting segments of the economy that are really reliant on the brain power of the professionals that are being hired and growing that component of the economy, that's really what should be targeted when we talk about a jobs initiative at OLF8. And so what we're recommending as part of this is that approximately 100 acres of OLF8 site be zoned and promoted and heavily marketed with incentives and with the proper engine behind it to really try to achieve success with this with this initiative. And if this creates 20 jobs per acre, which is conservative based upon, for example, Navy Federal and some of the other employment levels that are found and more traditionally office or flex types of users, that could create 2,000 jobs if actually successful or more. And, you know, I think what's what's necessary to emphasize here is that it's critical for the I-10 linkage to be developed, that this is going to have to take significant funding. that this is going to have to take significant funding to the marketing campaign that allows for various stakeholders to go out and promote this particular development initiative as a potential home for employers of choice. We spend a fair amount of time in our report talking about the fact that this mixed-use master plan development creates a lot of value for employers who are looking to be employers of choice, looking to be the employer that can attract those professionals and those technically skilled workers where they can pay high wages and attract them here in the first place because of the fact that they're part of this master plan development, that there's walk-to-retail places for them to go to lunch, that there are recreational amenities on-site, that they might even live on-site, and that this is an appealing location for their workers versus a traditional commerce park or industrial park. It really doesn't have any of those amenities. And so really, there needs to be the right effort put behind this initiative. But from our perspective, it's it's worthwhile to plan about 100 acres toward this use, but to plan it flexibly, so that if after we all feel like we've done our best to attract these types of employers of choice, to grow the economy with high-wage jobs, to help grow sectors of the economy such as cybersecurity, where there is clearly some green shoots happening, that if if after doing this for a period of time, it's not been successful, that in fact, the land has been zoned flexibly enough so that it can be repurposed for other uses such as residential or medical office or other types of uses. That's a very important factor here, because nobody wants to see vacant land sitting here for 20 years. We need to be strong about this going forward and really do our best to market this to these types of employers. But that if it doesn't work, the land needs to be developed with other uses. And so to contemplate that as the backstop to vacant land is an important factor. Key recommendations here, and we spent a lot of time in our report describing what we believe is a highly nuanced residential development program and commercial uses. We're recommending four phases. Generally speaking, we view the build-out of this as taking approximately 15 to 20 years, and that assumes that there's sequential construction and some uses are being built at the same time. But we have residential product that ranges between traditional rental apartment units totaling 900 units, loft rental apartment units, which have work-from-home features and large outdoor spaces, and appeal to a slightly more affluent renter totaling approximately 200 units, two flat townhomes, which include a rental unit within the townhome or can be consumed by the owner of the apartment or owner of the townhome for their own use. It works well for in-law quarters or for the aging-in-place type of population. This is obviously a significant retirement population in the Pensacola area. This product type allows for buyers of the townhomes to actually create some income to supplement their retirement income, or in fact, allows for income to to help pay the mortgage for a young family. And so this product type is generally absent from the market, yet is very successful in other places. We're recommending 200 total units here. For-sale townhomes, that tend to be more modestly sized than what's being built in the market now. Patio homes, which are relatively low-maintenance detached homes with private outdoor spaces, and cottages, which are also efficiently sized, single-family homes as well as traditional single-family homes. The key here, though, is that we intend to serve a more modest level of income with these housing options that is then what's served, for example, by Nature Trail or some of the other housing developments that are being undertaken in the market. And so that generally speaking, these housing alternatives are affordable for households earning between, you know, $45 and $133,000 a year. On average, most of these housing products...
Peter, we are going to need you all to wrap up.
Great. This is the last slide. So the residential product types are intended to be differentiated and affordable and value-oriented, and within the context of the master plan ought to be compelling. We're also recommending a total of 182,000 square feet of retail space, 600,000 square feet total of of industrial and office space, and in the last phase, 100 hotel keys. We also have introduced the concept of an agri-hood, which is something from which we would draw inspiration for the planning effort here, not to replicate an agri-hood, but to create interlocking green spaces, buffer zones, to tie the land back to its historical uses and cultural uses within this this area. And so to think about outhouses for for Joe Patty's Seafood, which is all, you know, for the most part, locally sourced seafood, to develop a retail location for them as part of this. For Perfect Plain, for example, which uses a lot of local ingredients to grow some of the ingredients on the OLF8 site, and then to open a brewery on on the site. These are the types of themes that we would encourage thinking about, because the traditional retail planning or mixed-use planning that's been deployed in the market so far has lacked a lot of creativity. And there's a lot of inspiration, if we look at other case studies, for some things that could really work here automatically. And so with that, I'll I'll stop, and it's been a pleasure to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take questions from from you all.
Well, I want to thank you for presenting just a very, very detailed initial look. Some significant concerns that I have as a gentleman, as a person who's lived out there for 16 years and seen all the the growth. Number one, when we backtrack to the beginning of your presentation and you had the pie chart that listed a large percentage in Bellevue, that's not true. That I guarantee you, a large percentage of that was the 32526 area code, which includes Bellevue, but also includes Beulah, where the project is. I understand why you brought what you did and the thorough analysis and the and, you know, what you think the market is and should do and things of this nature. And of course, I believe this sort of a high-level presentation would be would have been more suited to a corporate client who had acquired this property with the with a strict goal of maximizing the value. But the but the issue that I think we've overlooked, a couple, a couple of issues that I want, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go as brief as I can, but there's important issues that we got to talk about. We we spent decades in a very difficult process to acquire this property from the Department of Defense for a specific purpose, to create jobs that would benefit the entire county, not to not to create parcels for real estate that would actually compete with the private sector, who are building a lot of real estate out there right now. So I live right across the street, and I have for 16 years. And selfishly, of course, I would love, you know, the agri-hoods and all those really nifty things. But again, I look back and I think, I certainly hope we haven't prejudiced the charrette process by putting this out and using the term industrial. You know, my understanding of this project, when I inherited it, when I took this office in 2016, was that it was a jobs program for high-tech manufacturing, not industrial, not smokestacks, not crushing machines, not loud noises, not ugly buildings, but high-tech commercial. And there is that we've lost a lot of prospects in terms of, because we didn't have large parcels of land like this. So I do worry that we put the cart before the horse with this presentation. I've already been contacted by numerous residents who have told me in no uncertain terms, they want no more residential, no apartments, no high density. We've got a road project there that's, you know, already 18 months behind. People think it's my project. They think it's the Jeff Burgash project. They want my head on a stick. They're so angry and upset about the gridlock. So I would I would much prefer to, number one, make sure that the ballot box doesn't get stuffed by nearby residents who want to want to put ornaments on the tree to make it into a gigantic mall and low-paying retail, because that that's not why we got this property. We got this property to do $50, $60,000 a year jobs, high-tech manufacturing, clean for the entire county, for Lumen's district, for Robert's district, for Doug and Stevens' district, not to make a playground for the residents that live in Beulah like me. Selfishly, I would love it. I'd love nothing more than 55 soccer fields and a tennis complex. But we spent $20 million in taxpayers' money and decades trying to get this for a specific purpose, to benefit the entire county, not to compete with residential and mixed-use developers in the area. And there is a hotel being built right down the road. It's almost completed. I didn't see that in your study. There's a brand-new standalone ER that's going up right down the road. I didn't see that in your study. Multiple mixed-use development's coming. The Publix is coming. The idea that we would put another Publix or something like that right on the OLF8, I just disagree with, and I believe most of my constituents would as well. They don't want high-density residential. There's enough of that being built out there already. The infrastructure cannot support it. I see tremendous issues with this presentation. You know, and I appreciate you guys coming out, and they don't want high-rises out there either. I mean, they're already, we have difficulty with the ones that were built already. We're working right now to catch up and build a modern fire station that can support a ladder truck that would actually be able to respond to a problem at the big buildings that are built already. So we're playing catch-up out in that district. We just had an important election, and they re-elected me. And I'm speaking here for the people that live out there. They don't want any more high-density residential. They don't want it until the infrastructure catches up. That's number one. They know that we got this project. They may not love the idea of a commerce park for jobs, but they understand that, and I've not changed my tune at all on that. I fought on this dais for the last four years to stick with the fidelity of this project, to create jobs for the entire county, not to create a mall, not to create an amenity, but to create high-tech, high-paying jobs. You saw that list of jobs we lost to Santa Rosa County. We're losing them all the time, because we don't have a big parcel like this. If we constrain it to 100 acres, what is this 100 acres innovation? I don't I don't support that. That's garbage. We had a 636-acre parcel of land here that we were going to develop thousands of jobs with. I also don't see the Triumph Gulf Coast pre-app in here at all, in any of your projections. We could get up to $30 million back. That's for real. $30 million back, which would which would give us back all of our acquisition costs. How come that was not part of your evaluation? I'm disappointed by what I see today. You know, and I'm very concerned that you've that you've prejudiced what the average citizen would want to come and and add to your charrettes. So I get it, but we're not a corporate client who spent, you know, $80 million to buy this, and now we've got to maximize every penny of it. We're a government entity. We want to get we want to get value from it, but we have a purpose why we got it. And more importantly, we have a very, very hard-fought document, compromise document that we that this vote that this board voted unanimously on a few years ago. And and jobs creation and Triumph Gulf Coast, those were big parts of that compromise. I don't see that. I don't hear Triumph mentioned once in your presentation. Why is that? Why was that not mentioned once in this presentation? Are you guys aware of it, what that is? That's a question. Hello?
Yes.
Why was that not mentioned at all in the presentation? That's a huge component.
We're very aware. We are very aware that it is a huge component. And I just, I do want to reassure you that the the presentation today was about what what the marketability of the site is. Understanding that, we've always understood, and we've interviewed you all, except one of you, and we have always understood job creation to be the number-one goal. If you remember at the opening presentation we did a few months...